And I kind of been down.
Knights of the Round Table.
Yeah. That's the Joe table over there.
Yes, sir. But it's where we are now recording.
Okay, thanks, Lee.
I have a bear.
With the wall.
So I've been verified.
I'm sorry, I was so tired.
Yeah. It's, yeah, it is. So. Share a little story too. We need to work with. Culture and interest. This is introducing. It's more modular. So it's actually put together pretty better. On that. It's seven. It's our team. So. What? They got their plans to make it good. And they approached us and said, hey, we have a lot of things. It's about the huge. They were so crazy. It's using that same thing that's saying you're bad. Yeah, they're strapped a lot. It was kind of do the both is going to be done. And the nice thing is you got a guaranteed sale on the backside. Probably what we look at. Which, which is. We started pricing it all out. A, maybe expensive. We do a six thirty, which can help. And, yeah. With. We're not trying to kick it in. And we'll start later in the hands. For six. By the door. Yeah, so it ended up being about five hundred and fifty. With taxes every single.
Right there.
How's it going, Pat?
Uh, good. Just realized like fifteen minutes goes.
I got here, realized I left my fog. I'm like, well, if I can't get in the building, no one can. Problematic.
We're gonna go out and track you down.
That's true, yeah. They don't want to find me.
So giddy about school being out. And I'm like, all fifteen things I'm gonna get done in a week. And then, of course, reality hits it.
Well, it's six thirty-two, and I think it's time to call this meeting to order. Uh, planning commission June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four is now in session. If you all stand, please, for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice of all.
Roll call. Pat Huggins. Yeah. Present. Matthew Devoin.
And.
Daniel Pryber. Joe Cateese. Silas Maddox.
Absolutely.
Going once, going twice. No. Joe Burnett, present. Cassandra Sexton. Did any, everyone have a chance to read the minutes of last month's meeting? Do we have any comments on the minutes? Correct. I didn't say anything wrong. That.
Not even one comma out of place.
It's, it's not picking on anybody around here. Well, uh, anybody want to, uh? See, what do we do?
Make a motion.
Make a motion to pass the minutes as written.
I assume.
There's a six.
I'll second.
Okay. Sandra, all those in favor of the minutes as written, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, nay. Okay. Minutes are good. We have next, general public comments. Do I even bring this up?
Yes. You, you open it up at.
Okay, the general public comments are open at six thirty-four. Um, and we're gonna treat this as general public comments. Okay. Please keep comments to three minutes or less, even though you can waive that. Because state law prohibits the use of city facilities for the purpose of supporting or opposing a campaign or ballot proposition. We respectfully request that public comment not make reference to such matters. Written comments will be accepted by letter or via email. At NMC Galen at Seadrill Woolly dot gov. Attention, public comments.
I have one written comment.
One written comment. Do you want to start with that?
Sure. Okay, so this comes from Catherine Olson with Family Promise Skagit Valley. We at Family Promise are in talks with Central United Methodist Church on Fullie Road. They sit on two point nine eight acres, which is cleared lawn at the southern property line. In addition, Family Promise is in the process of purchasing a portion of the Bethlehem Lutheran Church property on Wicker Road. That has a home on it. We believe it is possible to do a boundary line adjustment to create a larger site between the two churches as the properties border each other. We have an impact campaign currently running to finance all of this. We have been in talks and have taken a tour of West Coast Construction's tiny home site up on Lake Wat, Lake Watcom. There are permanent structures that are really nice, and I encourage you to check out their website at www.westcoasthomes.com. It would be possible for me to arrange a tour for you if you wish. These structures are cottage style. We are hoping that the city would consider allowing these homes on the property at Central United. The site is currently zoned R seven, which has a six thousand square foot minimum lot size. We're wondering if the city would allow a cluster scenario. Or perhaps in our seventeen zoning to increase the density as the main footprint of the cottages is under four hundred square feet. In some cases, it is under three hundred square feet on the main floor. These would not be sold on the open market necessarily, but rather Family Promise would manage them like we do our other transitional homes. Family Promise would like to own the properties rather than rent from a landlord as we have less control over. If the home is sold or leases and et cetera, when we don't own them. We love the idea of calling them cottages as tiny homes have such a negative connotation these days. Cottages are a great way for us to provide more stable housing for families and still manage the properties. If you're unfamiliar with Family Promise of Skagit Valley, we are a national organization that brings the community together to support homeless families. As they work to provide their children with loving homes. I can also give you a tour of our facility at both of the aforementioned churches and the property we are proposing for the cottages.
One online. Anyone online up there that wants to comment?
We have no attendees.
Okay. And did we have, uh? Do you want to present people who were here to speak or?
Let's wait until we open the agenda title.
Okay. This is a general comment, so we'll have another one. What? Just specific. Call for the unfinished business.
Okay. So that's it for general public comments. Which is closed at six thirty-seven. Moving on to the next item, public hearings. Which isn't any. Okay, on to unfinished business. Proposed amendments to chapter two point nine zero and title seventeen Seadrill Woolly municipal code to add regulations for cottage clusters.
Uh, so today we're kind of doing this a little unorthodox from the typical planning commission meetings. So we have some members of the audience here who have interest in cottage clusters or tiny homes or low to middle income housing, just in general. So we have Raymond Faber here. He's, uh, Faber Construction. So he was, uh, a huge part in the project of Wildwood cottages that we've done the, the tour at some of us. And you saw a presentation on that. Um, really nicely done homes. I consider him an expert in the subject matters. So he's here to kind of help, you know, if we have any questions with the amendments as they're written. Kind of did a rewrite of the amendments here, so I wanted to bring some people in. That know a thing or two about this kind of stuff. Uh, Donna Keeler here, she's actually, um, on our consultant team, helping with the comp plan, but she also has some interest in, uh, um. Housing for, for low, middle income as well. Um, and I'm sorry, can, can you, uh, tell us who, who you two are?
I'm fifty years old. I'm in Marjorie Heights.
Yeah.
And we are here from Indivisible Skagit. And we have about fourteen hundred little over that members in Skagit County, but a number of them live in. Um, the city of Seadrill Woolly, and one of our concerns is affordable housing.
Great, thank you.
And low income house.
Yeah, so I guess we can jump into kind of the, the changes. We kind of did a major rewrite of this because the original thought was, you know, Family Promise had come to us asking about. Uh, tiny homes, whether we allow them as a, uh, tiny home community is just in general. And we'd started kind of drafting up something because we didn't have regulations at the time. We wanted to, you know, encourage the idea of allowing for affordable housing or, or housing for, um, those folks that are in need of transitional housing, that sort of thing. Um, but that conversation kind of branched out into something more than that. So we're looking at not only tiny homes, but branching out some more, um, what we've kind of called cottage housing cottage clusters. So this would allow for any home between two hundred and five square feet up to about twelve hundred is where we tapped it in regulations. Um, we did a lot of revising on, uh, you know, permitting types and things like that. The idea there is to make it so these, um, housing developments are easy, quick, um, not overly costly for people to get the permitting for them. Um, so before you saw, we had them proposed as conditional use permits. And now we've switched that to making them essentially the same as you would do for multifamily housing with the. Tweak that you do have to have a pre-application meeting for these. So you get the chance to kind of sit with city staff and okay, what do I have to do to meet the code requirements for fire department access? What am I gonna have to do for utilities out of every sewer end, those sorts of things? Get all those initial questions answered and some guidelines before you enter the permitting process. Um, but then you'd be able to go in and, uh. Oh, excuse me. So, uh, you'd go in, apply for a cottage cluster application. So that's similar to how we do the ADU, um, development authorization. So you just, um, apply for the cottage cluster application. That's an administrative approval Tom would sign off on. Um, and that's where we would kind of check down the list of regulations. Is it possible that you can meet all of these things? And if we find yes, that you can, then you move forward with your filling grade and your building permits, just like you would with the multifamily development. So pretty, pretty simple. You don't have to go through a hearing examiner process or anything like that. Um, and as far as timeline goes, it's a lot quicker as well. Um. Other than that, we've added in a definition for cottage home to kind of specify this is a tiny home. And we removed the except specifically accepted park model from that, so people aren't confused. Does a park model count as a tiny home? No, it does not. Um. Cottage housing has a definition now as well. Um. Yeah, did a little bit of cleanup in chapter two ninety to kind of. Show the new permitting process for these. See. What to do? Yeah, reworked the density table as well. There was a lot of, a lot of stuff that we, we updated in here. Uh. Yeah, so as far as density goes. Uh, under. Seventeen point two. Yeah, so it's seventeen, one, two, oh, oh, five, oh, the density table's kind of, um, been reworked to just be more simple. So minimum units allowed in any of the residential zones is four. And the maximum units allowed for the R five zone is eight. For the R seven zone is ten, and for the R fifteen zone is twelve. Uh, we did take out the density bonus related to energy efficiency, just with the thought that. Adding that in actually does take away from the affordability of these homes, unfortunately. I think the energy efficiency is great, but maybe not for these regulations if we're trying to achieve affordability. Um. So we also capped, if you're going to include density bonuses, you can't go beyond twelve. Units total in any development, so, uh. Let's see, what else was a major change here? Um, the lot area requirements was a, was a big change there. So they are exempt from typical minimum lot area requirements that are typically applicable to your residential zones. Um, so long as they comply with density and development standards. So, um, kind of similar to how you, how we saw at Wildwood. Where it was just kind of this large site and you do have setback regulations in here and lot coverage regulations in here that kind of. Um, will govern your spacing. And there's also spacing between buildings included in here, so that way they're not too, um. Clustered in there, I guess. Uh, uh, try to avoid like the, um. Uh, claustrophobic kind of field having too much cramping going on, so it's still some parameters in there. Um. Parking, so we decided to, for residential units between two hundred and five and up to eight hundred square feet. One parking space shall be provided. And then for anything over eight hundred and up to twelve hundred square feet, you need two parking spaces. And you can do that either in a community parking area within the development boundaries. Um, immediately adjacent to the residence or within private garages. And you can do a combination of any of those to achieve your parking requirements as well. Um. See. The open space bit, um. See, I upped the no single area shall be less than, I think it was fifteen hundred square feet before, something like that. I upped that to two thousand because I think. The open space should kind of be a central focus for this kind of thing. If we're gonna have small houses and small lots, I think having a central open space, um, is important here. Kind of create, you still have your front yard kind of situation, so. Yeah, courtyard kind of central. And there's also now the requirement that, uh, fifty percent of your time, or. Sorry, your cottages have to be centered around or oriented around that open space, that central open space. Um, it also changed. I think before it said fifty percent has to be usable. I brought that to seventy-five percent. I want a lot of this to be useful open space for people. Um. Yeah, some specifics on the approval procedure, just to walk people through what they'll need as far as permitting for this and what the steps are that they'll have to take. And I cleaned up the requirement for homeowner, homeowners association and restrictive covenants, that sort of thing. Um, and then there were just some updates to that proposed, um, design standards chapter to kind of match with the changes that we made in the municipal code amendments. Um, so yeah, that's kind of a very brief overview of what all we changed, but yeah, I'd like to open this up so that we can. Chat about this. There were a lot of changes that happened here and I think we're getting closer to something that works, but, um, yeah. Initial thoughts, anything?
I'd just like to acknowledge Nicole, the work that she put into this. I put a lot of time into it, set up the tours and, um, pulled in research from other communities. And, um, comfortable with that, did all the brainstorming and packaged this up. And I think she spent a couple of late minutes putting it all together to me. Thank you.
Uh, I just wanted to say, um, in the past when we've done these roundtable things, we've just kind of brought everybody, I think there's enough chairs, we brought everybody to the table so that like. I don't have to look over my shoulder and you can all just.
You can do that.
Come on up. Don't be shy. Welcome to the table.
It feels more like a conversation. Yeah.
There's a chair for you right here.
Hey Raymond, I have a question for you. So I didn't see much difference between the stuff built on site versus the park models. Uh, one thing I want to open the discussion a little bit more here is design guidelines. Because I've seen some of these tiny home clusters that basically showed you get an heritage and just stick them one next to the other. We are not trying to do that at all. Trying to do something what you did up on Lake Watcom. So why wouldn't we preclude? Because they're the same size, really. Park model, the different antisea standards. I mean, you had a verbatim exactly what's there. Why wouldn't we consider both of them? Because from an affordability standpoint. Park models are already done, they're preset, they're DOL compliance, not a whole bunch of other things. So it sounds like to me that we should take a look at that. Not from a, about perspective of just rolling up like a single wide on wheels. Well, I saw some really nice product or up at, uh, Lake Watcom. What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I, I'm, I would, I recommend you consider that, uh, um, a park model. Um, the park model allows us to get away from. The Wa, the Washington State Energy Code. Um, but yeah, can open you up to other issues as well, like you said. I don't want, I wouldn't like anything looking like a park either if somebody's gonna live there or. Or own it, own it. There's got to be pride of ownership as well. Um. So I would maybe consider. This is my first time ever being at one of these, by the way, so.
Just be yourself.
Yeah, okay, good. Because I don't know what I.
We're out there.
But maybe some design standards saying we need, we need insulation in the wall. We need, we need different siding types. We need.
Glazing.
Yeah, certain, certain requirements so that it takes it from. A box, which you can build a park model as a box, but I don't know if that, you don't want everybody living in job office trailers either. Um, so if you can say, yes, we will accept the park model built to the ANSI one one nine point five code. Um. It has to be permanently mounted or something like that on a foundation. Um. But we, we're gonna add some additional requirements to that. I would say, consider that.
Right.
Yeah, just. And then I don't know if you're allowed to say, well, we also want a certain standard of energy code. Like I'm, I'm not a, I'm not saying get rid of all energy codes. Like there, there's got to be a fine line of. Cost to value and, and the Washington State Energy Code goes to one major extreme. The other fear is the ANSI code, a park model itself. Has pretty low standards, so I don't want everybody either having R five in the wall. So, so maybe you say, well, we would allow it, but there's, you've got to bring it to this level.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so maybe there's some. We'll allow two by four wall, we'll even allow R fifteen, even though. That, but that allows me to fit just a sin, single back in a two by four wall. Are we gonna save? Are we gonna lose a ton of efficiency through an R fifteen? No. Um, you would like me to prove it, I can try and find an engineer out there to prove that you wouldn't. But I, I, I'm always a little bit careful to, um, trip over dollars to pick up dimes.
Right, I know, absolutely. And there's always a middle ground, I hear what you're saying.
What was the ANSI standard?
Uh, it's one one nine point five, ANSI.
Yeah, ANSI.
It's, is the park model code that we built.
This is just more from an outside appearance, unless you actually knew it. Right?
Yeah.
From the skirting or whatever goes on with it, really can't tell.
No.
So I'm saying.
No.
It looks like they could deploy that master.
Yeah.
You know, that's what they're looking to do in some of these projects.
What also is nice with the park model code. Um. Washington State, I don't think, did a good job in adopting it. Forty-nine of the states adopted appendix Q to the IRC, which is more or less the ANSI codes. Uh, but Washington State. Played around with the rules a little bit, and then they do stuff like. A sleeping loft has a maximum size of seventy square feet. Um. Why? I, I don't know. So in a park model, there is no maximum size, as long as it's. For them, it's less than five feet height. It doesn't get counted against the four hundred square feet. Um. Then. Um, and that works for us too. We ship them down the road. I can't go twenty feet tall.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it works, but it doesn't put a ma, uh, max size. So the irritating part with, but I build the same model and love to take you to our, our facility. Right now I've got the perfect example. I've got two units side by side. Saxton, we call it a Bellevue tiny home, the Bellevue Park model. You walk through it, you will not tell the difference. One has to have a seventy square foot loft. And it costs more because the energy code, and the other one has a bigger loft and is less expensive because it's a park model. And visit, you, you would look at it, you wouldn't notice a difference. Um. And, yeah, so.
Right, one of the main criteria here is affordability. I mean, that's like.
Amen.
It's a lot of this stuff. The dirt's expensive enough, but I thought we put the other stuff in everything else.
Yes.
Yeah, so. Thank you.
Can you tell the difference, uh, like, uh, different kinds of year, like, uh, they have to heat their park models more? Because the insulation of places is going to enter to lower.
Yeah, well, I don't think you have to heat it more. It's still four hundred square feet or whatever. Like between a tiny house and a park model, they both are capped at four hundred square feet on the main floor. Um. And. I haven't done an energy code analysis, but you're not gonna lose that much heat on four hundred square feet. It's, I. It, it, the same heaters apply and you're just going, okay. Some heat can escape through a little thinner insulation, but we're talking. A dollar a month versus. I, I, I'm not the engineer. I haven't done the calculation. That's just me. Being a redneck engineer.
You know, materials change over time too. I mean, if you look, even, even five years ago, what was available. Versus what's available now, just even, hey, you can get so much more out of a linear foot of timber.
Yeah.
Than you could only ten years ago. It's just remarkable, Kelly.
Yeah, that and homes are tighter, like, a lot of, a lot of, I mean, insulation's one thing. Just a drafty house is another, and so with the tivek and all your, the tapes that are out there, now you have. An R fifteen plus a really tightly wrapped home, it's not gonna escape unless you open a window or a door. Um, which is what you need to do anyway to get new air in.
I was just gonna say, I built the house once. I had to be airtight, and then I had to put in a seven thousand dollar air circulation system, so air would.
I, I agree. I, it's, it's irritating.
Yeah, so I'm thinking you can make these as efficient as possible, and you still want to have a window open, but.
And you're, and you're letting the heat out the window, yeah.
I mean, use a bathroom fan to time a lot of it because you always want air going through the facility.
Because I've heard houses have to breathe, right? Is that accurate to say that?
Yeah, yeah, that's accurate.
Yeah, I think if the concern is about the, the kind of the design, like not having these look like a cardboard box, right? I think that there is language worked in here that kind of achieved. That vision, because there's stuff like, um, if you look under the design standards. Chapter, there's a section in there for building design.
Where did you get that? What did you use? Because the PRD, you spent a lot of time. On the, uh, design guidelines with, uh?
Uh. I used a lot out of the PRD there. I just, yeah, I changed, I changed a lot of things and added some stuff in just to be a little more specific. Wow, specific to these kinds of developments. Um. But, so, you know, things like buildings shall articulate, shall include articulation along with facades facing and visible from public rights of way, internal access traps and common open space. Flat blank walls are prohibited. You have horizontal facades longer than twenty feet. You have to articulate them into smaller units reminiscent of the residential scale, include two of the following methods. Um, distinct roof forms, changes in materials, window patterns, color difference. Distinct roof forms, changes in materials, window patterns, color differentiation, recesses and offsets. It goes in, see, five, a variety of siding materials shall be used on the facades of the building that faces the street. Any internal drives, common open space or other pedestrian ways, siding materials should respect the architectural design of adjacent existing structures. So that's kind of working to, you know, it's gonna mesh in well with your neighboring homes. It's, um, I think that's regulated pretty well with the language that's put in here. And those are standards, those are, those apply in every case. The guidelines, guidelines, right? So this is what we would like to see, but it's not an outright required item. So I put in there, you know, low, low cost siding materials that mimic high quality appeal are encouraged. So we get, get that push in for kind of what we're looking for.
Um, I have a question, uh, one more question about the park models.
Yeah.
The ones you're building, are you using bat insulation? Are you using foam insulation? Or how are you, how are you achieving your?
Current, well, yeah, so for a park model, it's a bat, you can get that and then in a two by four. But we, we custom build them, so I have some clients that say spray foam the whole thing and you're getting an R21 at least.
I was gonna say, yeah, there's a huge difference between R15 with batting and R15 with foam, because the foam is a vapor barrier and a, and an air seal. So when you foam them, R15, you're getting a lot more, you're getting a, a lot more energy efficiency, just in the fact that it's bonus of that.
It, it's sealed up quite tight, yeah.
It's sealed up quite tight, yeah.
The cost on that is next to nothing. I mean, it's just an injection on the inside of the walls.
The, the spray foam is definitely coming down. I think that's, that, that's an example of technology. Yeah, I'm a, I, I I get that we want to advance technologies to get more efficient homes. Spray foam's an example of something that was very expensive when it first came out and the prices dropped dramatically. So, yeah, and I can achieve an R21 in the, in a two by four wall quite easy.
Even thinking of the manpower alone, to apply that, stapling everything out in place and just how it seals everything.
Yeah, 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 goes, goes very quick. Just, you don't wanna renovate later. It's a lot of chipping of foam.
Different, different way of thinking for me because, uh, I'm, I'm in, been looking more conventional housing, not, um, not affordability for houses. But one of the big equation that's, that's come up over the last few years is, you know, you can get a house that's much cheaper to live in by spending 10% more on it when you're building it, um, and for standard homes, but banks won't loan that extra 10%. So, uh, that, that battle's been going on since the seventies that, um, they should, they should find a way to get banks to give the 110% loan so that you can get the, the insulation, the HRV, all of the things that will, will help the, uh, get the energy efficient in the home, which drives down the, uh, and other things too, like fire. Sorry. Not firing all thrusters here tonight, um, fire resistance and all of those kinds of things at, at the same time. And it only goes about 10% more. Um, but then those homes are much, much cheaper to live in for the rest of their existence. I built a stagger stud, uh, super efficient over here, um, on Dane Street. Uh, it's only, I wanna say it's 945 square feet, I can't remember the thing, it's been so many years ago. But anyway, I mean, the, the power bill there and the way we put it together is, it's very low maintenance, uh, metal rubs, foam insulation, eight inches on the south side, uh, 12, 12 inches on the north side. And, um, that house has a power bill of 40, $45 a month for the gas and, and then about the same 37 or 38 dollars, I don't think, right now for, uh, for electricity. So it's really, really cheap to live in. Once it's done, uh, I didn't go to a bank and borrow money to do it. My, my mom and I just built, uh, built it, I decided and she funded the money and we built it. So we saved a lot through on the construction part of it, but, uh, but that's an important thing too, you know, uh, I, I, I know we need to do affordability so people can actually get into a home. But then we don't wanna saddle them with, um, with ever increasing water, gas and, um, bills and that kind of stuff, which a lot of people lose their homes because they get into them and they can't afford both the maintenance upkeep and the, um, and the increases in, in all the utilities and everything. So anyway, I, this is just a different way for me to, to think about it. So I'm gonna have to do some meshing there.
Yeah, maybe to help think about it, the one thing always, so I'm gonna speak to some state reps. I don't know if you were here when I was mentioning it on Thursday is, is, is add another layer at least to the Washington State Energy Code for just small, small homes. Eating 400 square feet is very different to double at 800 or 900 or 1,000 or 2,000 square feet with high ceilings. And these are quite low ceilings, you were in them, but they're not. They're not that low. I mean, you're not, no. So, um, in, in many ways, I, when I cross compare it, you're almost at $15,000 extra to build a tiny house versus a park model. And then you have to look at the payoff period and the bill on the utility bill on a park model. I mean, I can call some people at Wildwood to see what their bill is year over year. But I, I don't think something at that's small of a structure.
I understand, cause it's when you're that small, your increases is great. Yeah, like my little one that I built stagger stud, it, like I said, it's like 945 or something square feet. And if I told you what the bill was for that, my house is 2,700 square feet, uh, built in 1963. And my power bill is about 385 a month to 425 a month for, uh, cause it's a horse or electric. And insanely high, I wish I had money for my, uh, little house is built.
Yeah, the reason I brought it up to begin with is it's that whole transitional housing component we're talking about here. Those budgets are gonna be fairly limited. So to accomplish what that goal is to add that housing, with the correct design guidelines that we can deploy, where someone can deploy, the more cost effective manner, that's where I was going with that, because Wildwood was a great example of a combination of both. So different people have different needs. I mean, you have maybe a development that wants to do a cottage cluster for sale versus churches or other social support organizations that have a totally different agenda than somebody else. So there's gotta be a kind of happy medium where we get what we want from the city perspective as well as accommodating the needs of the different groups and organizations within the community, so.
Yeah, on, on different examples, I'm currently working with the Lummy Nation, um, on very, something very similar, um, on a smaller scale, 24 units, um, just for rehab housing.
Really gonna put where the old casino was next to where the Wadcombe chief is, something, I know that reservation real well. It was. I think where the open spaces even.
Yeah, it's, it's on, it's an old campground on the west side of the reservation.
Okay.
Overlooking the water.
It's, so it's not a flood zone?
No, it's up on the flood.
Beautiful.
Yeah, it will be very beautiful.
I have a question for you, Nicole. Do you recall why we opted not to allow park models? We didn't want tires or wheels or?
Yeah, the, the idea was, you know, with, with these, we'll call it college clusters, wanting to have them be permanent housing, we wanted to get away from the idea that park models kind of intended to be temporary. So we wanted to make sure it's very clear to people, we're intending to have these be permanent dwellings.
But they, they are.
Right, so the way that Raymond did that, there, yeah.
It's just a different way of deploying it at a better cost. I mean, they're all skirted, they're on foundations. It's just that the DOL is like the, the governing organization versus a whole lot of other things. Yeah, that's why I brought it up.
You can, you can do certain, certain things to, to prohibit them to be moved. You can say, well, they need to be permanently mounted. Is everything permanent? Well, no, unboltable. But what we did at Wildwood, um, was also removed five of, five of six axles. So I met the letter of the law by leaving an axle. To meet, to meet somebody's requirement and now somebody else's requirement to leave them. So you can move it, but you can only move it two inches, it won't go very far.
Yeah, yeah. That's why I thought it was such a great example, because I, I've done manufactured housing. Coach Corral, I've used a bunch of their product for clients and it's nice stuff. I mean, you would know, I mean, people associate manufactured housing with double wides, single wides. That's way, way yesterday. Not even close to that being the reality today. So you can deploy projects like this in a very tasteful way.
Yeah, another thing is just make certain, if, if you're, this is the route you'd go, is to also say that it has a removable hatchet. I've seen it a few too many times where you have this beautifully skirted unit, you got this hitch hanging up the front.
That's something to break.
That was your design. It's not a big deal anyway. I mean, we, we have two, uh, two, two modulars, uh, corner panes and, and highway 20 there. Little house with two modulars on either side of it and, uh, you know, landscaping's all integrated, but the, but one that we, when we pulled them in, my dad pulled in the two, uh, double, double wides and, uh, and it wasn't even required then, but, uh, we skirted them with skirting and then they cut off both tongues and they said, no big deal. Move them, we just come weld the tongue back on and put the wheels back on and haul them away. And so.
So they just toss them underneath.
Yeah, at a glance, they look like just houses, but they, when you look at, again, you know, they're late seventies, excuse me, late eighty, uh, late eighty double wides, so.
So, go ahead. You say that the permitting process, that was another big difference though between the ANSI park models, right, versus the other. And I think that was possibly part of the reasoning for why we were thinking, uh, because we wanna permit it through the city, right, versus if it's in LNI?
Yeah.
Am I wrong?
Yeah, LNI, and that's again, one of my discussion points with the state reps is get more plans examiners at LNI to speed things along. It is laborious, especially the, the tiny house portion. And, and a lot of it has to do with them still learning the energy code themselves, because it keeps changing. So it, it, that takes a long time. The park models don't go as long as a tiny house, because it goes through just different routing through, through, through the agency. If there was, I, I, I would say allow both, because if you allow a tiny house and if you're willing to come inspect them in Linden and/or wherever they're made, be cautious, because who knows where they can be made at some point in time? You don't wanna tax yourself either. Or you, you do virtual inspections. I would love the local municipalities to inspect these over LNI, unless, unless LNI fixes their game. It would be very nice.
I know when, when Bobby, our building inspector, goes out for manufactured homes that are done through LNI and all he looks for is that little
Sticker.
Sticker. And he's like, good to go. That's about it.
Yeah, no, they're so short staffed. I mean, just before I came here, our, our building inspector from LNI showed up at 5:30 after everybody's gone, said sorry and was supposed to be there too.
How many units did he have to look at? Like 10?
He had to look at three. So I, all I did was open the building to him and said, called up my partner and said, show up at the office, quick.
Poor guy, I felt bad, because you know, he's got traffic, depends where he's coming from, that's, at least he showed up.
He did show up. He's a good guy. The inspectors made that.
Maybe that product, that would have that sticker.
Nope.
So there, I can't hear everything going on over there, which reminds me, I'm supposed to speak up and talk to the, that speaker right there. Um, are there two different building codes involved with a stick frame house and park models? I mean, ones, ones on wheels, that's a different building code, right? And we're trying to put things in here that are to the international building code, or whatever you call it.
Yeah, so there's two building codes, um, that I build to. Technically three, if I get into commercial work, I have to go to the IVC. If I build a tiny house or any standard modular house, I have to go to the IRC. And if I do a park model, it's the ANSI 119.5.
Oh, okay, that's what you were saying.
Yeah.
So I think right now, what are, what we have written in here is to what?
The IVC? Currently it's a IRC, I suspect, because it was excluding the park models.
What do I have?
But that's why I brought it up to begin with, because you know, it's the deployment, the affordability. I, I get the, let the regulatory aspect of it. We're trying to accomplish a whole bunch of different things, so I don't think we shouldn't exclude them. Simply for the fact that it's like a pretty viable solution, you get the same result at the end of the day, so.
Yeah, the parameters in there where we're talking about our values and skirting, it has to be put permanently and, yeah.
If you can bring those standards up, absolutely.
Tell, tell me, cause I'm not familiar with our values, like what, what would you suggest to put in, like has to be within this range for our values to be considered affordable?
If I can do it in a bat over spray foam, I would prefer, so it'd be an R15 in the wall, an R30 in the floor. And I can get an R30 easily in the ceiling. Um, I can get to an R38. It just lowers the loft a little bit, because I'm stuck at a 16 foot height limit to get it down the road. So and everything just goes down.
So is that in the ANSI?
Um, the ANSI code, I couldn't tell you, because I've never built something to the low side of the ANSI. ANSI, I, I can read and get it to you. But I don't think, I don't think the requirement for insulation is very high technically in a parking.
Not changes anything, I mean, from a material standpoint, I mean, the older days, you had formaldehyde, the old spray that was a nightmare. That's why they stopped doing a lot of that stuff, now the newer stuff is like that.
Yeah.
So you can get that same R value on a product that big versus something that big.
That's, uh, I was just gonna say that, that's why you're getting such good value on it, because you've covered the 30 in the floor, 30 in the ceiling. You, you've taken out the big, two big losers, uh, heat, heat loss.
Right.
So the walls are, lose energy, but they don't lose it at the same rate as the ceiling.
Yeah, yeah.
If you're sealed tight, you got R15 in the wall, but your R30, it rises on top of your angle shafts.
And I need that space anyway, just for structure. So might as well fill the cavity. That, that was our logic.
So I'm putting a little list together. We put park models back in as a permitted use. I'm gonna separately define them in 1704.
With the same guidelines.
With the same guidelines, they'll all still apply, but I'm gonna add a couple of things. So remove the hitch, permanently mounted, R15 wall, R30 floor, R30 ceiling minimums and skirting.
And one axle remains. Raymond, could you describe how they're tied down? Are they actually lifted off and set on a foundation? You just roll them over a pad and pull it, jack them up or?
We do both at the time.
Yeah, it, it happens multiple different ways. Some people choose to do a slab, which is the nicest, but it costs a little more. Um, the bare minimum our engineer requires is a sonotube, if you're familiar with it.
Yeah.
Um, and we place a sonotube down each side, um, tucked in from the edges to feet.
Sonotube is vertical.
Yeah, yeah. And, and all we need to do is go to frost depth, which here is 18 inches. Yeah, Bellingham's 12 inches, Wadcombe County's mostly 18. Um, so dig a hole 18 inches deep, two foot diameter. Um, and we place them one every six feet, um, or tighter, depending on the unit's length. And then the unit rolls over, they jack it up, we put blocks under it. Um, depending on the engineer's requirements, um, we grow, fill them. Um, and then they can get strapped down for seismic. And then that's it. It's, it, it's held down by scrapping.
Foundation of both single family houses that exist from 1960 backwards in the entire state.
Yeah, it's more of the post and beam type foundation versus the, which is the old, old way of doing things versus the stem wall.
We, sorry, we, as I say, we did kind of half between to, we, they required us to do, uh, they were, uh, I think they were eight by, eight by 20 rim perimeter and then one down the middle. Um, and then we didn't have to pour in like a smooth, smooth it out, right? And then we just have the metal loops in it, so it's not going anywhere. It's gonna get shredded before it's gonna lift off. Then and then we just have the metal loops in it, so it's not going anywhere, I know. It's gonna get shredded before it's gonna lift off.
Right. We're not in the Midwest. Um, so I would say as long as you also add in there that, well, I suppose that would be the fake case anyway, as long as the foundations are done by a licensed engineer. They stamp off on it.
How did, how do you address the skirting? You know, seeing good examples in the.
Very good, very good. Um. What we do, and it's, it's proven itself at Wildwood, you've walked Wildwood and you don't see a lot rotting. Uh, away, um, is. We frame the skirt out of pressure treated material, um. And then we apply hardy sheets over it, so you get your four by eight sheets and you you get it to. Follow the profile of the ground and it's tucked under the belly band to make it look neat and clean. Um, we do put cedar battens on it. Um, those could be. Those are questionable, you could go to Hardy, but Hardy's harder to shoot on battens. Um, but we haven't had an issue with the cedar. Um, and then we make sure we, it's all bedded in gravel, something that's free draining. And as long as it's free draining and water's not gonna sit there and puddle. Hardy can sit in a bucket of water and so that's. So I would make sure it's a cementitious material of some sort and.
How do we capture that in the code language?
I uh, cementitious, like how to spell that?
What you were looking at, you wouldn't even know that was skirting.
Right, I think that's, I think that's now, you know, because I'm not a tour, I think that's right, I wasn't even paying attention to. Um, okay, so, yeah, I mean, how do we? Where do we find that? Yes, cement board siding of 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 some sort, um, yeah. Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do plastic, um, I'm not a big fan of vinyl siding because. I played hockey up against vinyl siding and my uncles weren't very happy with that, with the shape of it afterwards, so.
I've seen nice cultured stone projects.
Yeah.
When cultured stones, only like, yo, they're gonna, it looks like it's. Just like granite on, you know.
Right.
Eastern, East Coast style brownstones, because you can do some great stuff with that product.
Right.
So as we make these changes, um. If we, we can call you and say.
I'm, I'm just the right. I'm, I'm available for a phone call anytime, cool, yeah, so if you can just say that it's maybe not. Use words like non-organic, or if it is organic, i.e. wood, it's got to be pressure treated. If something there. Trying to think of the right words.
Yeah, we can wordsmith that, but.
No, Raymond, thank you so much. The one thing that I think we've done really, really well in this planning commission over the years. Has been around forever, we include the development community. See, we find things out from you guys that we don't know.
Yeah.
Right? And that is so important to us and expands our. Knowledge of exactly what it takes to deploy the project. As well as the product and what goes into it, that we get what we are looking for as a city.
Yeah.
But also it's, it it works for you guys as well, because you're the ones selling it.
It's easier to roll a lot of code changes, you have that input, uh, to find out after you've adopted it. Yeah, yeah, it's a pleasure and I also want to commend you on a few other things as as a quasi developer as well. Um, what I always say is density cures a lot of issues or allows me to bring down. The costs and just doing this increases density. Uh, so you can divide your land cost over more lots, which is always beneficial. Um, and then the other thing is making it more streamlined. I would say those that take the most risk also expect the most reward. So as a developer who goes out and does stuff that's risky, they're going to expect to have a bigger reward, which is higher prices. So take away the risk. Should reduce their desire for income or higher income, I I'm.
Sure that, uh, we started this journey, we we always look at other jurisdictions. Kirkland did something really good to streamline the process. They had five or six models. That were already on paper, done, ready to go. Nice stuff, you can mix it up. But it didn't take five months to do, boom, you brought that project in, it was ready to go, you're permitted in thirty days. So we, it's, when we start these journeys, we're looking other places as well and.
We, we briefly talked about that as well, started the conversation on having pre-approved.
Designs, yeah.
Designs, yeah, I think that would be great, you know, anyone can come in. Make a selection, you know, I'd like to do these three models and my tiny home community, or sorry cottage cluster. Uh, and and then you just run with it, you know, the review's already been done. You just get your permit real quick and you're out the door and you get, you can get started. Right, yeah. And that way, you know, we can contract with someone to do those plans exactly how we want them done. You know, and then. With that, there's no issues of.
Don't do this all the time. There's certain models, everybody does it. You know, what they'll do is they'll put the garage on one side versus the other side, they'll do a different style of siding, it's the same model. But if you look at it, you realize, wow, that's the same model, but it really doesn't look it. Civic Ridge does a really good job at that kind of stuff.
You give us some feedback on how, what what you think is a good density, like how many of these? Park model units would you say? For a half an acre, because, you know, we're looking at all three residential zones. Uh, in Cedar Willie with a maximum of up to twelve units on a half an acre. The draw on the infrastructure, the plumbing, the sewer, the power.
Yeah. So at at Wildwood. I want to be caught, because I I like the idea of making sure, because if I go small, I want to make sure that this communal area is is provided, because. Uh, I I I did rent in a previous life and it was, it was tight and I didn't know what to do with my kids. So at Wildwood, as an example, um, the average are. Probably the smallest lots about forty by eighty and I did the math, it's about three thousand two hundred square feet. Um, so maybe if we can, if if you'd consider at four thousand, I know. Many cities will do six thousand, but maybe four thousand, maybe even thirty, as long as there's. The common area, because there's, there's not much left. And then. Yeah, with this whole cottage idea. You're not intending to, uh, let me ask you a question, because I didn't get a ton of time to read this. Um, is the intent to? Condominiumize the lots or is the intent to actually make parcels or?
HOA.
HOA, it's condominium, perfect, okay, because if you were gonna.
That's the only way you can do it anyway.
Yeah.
Like I could think of a lot of just common areas as to why you have HOAs.
Right.
The detached, the detached condominiums, that's all.
Because, yeah, we can do different things with, with. Setbacks, I'm doing a development right now in Bellingham, uh, for a tiny house community and. And the developer wanted to have eighteen foot wide lots. Um, so they're really, really skinny. I don't, oh, I. Struggle to agree with him on this, um, and he originally came to me and said, here's my. Here's my plan, I need an eight foot wide unit. Because I need five foot separation for fire to the, to the property line, so the neighbor is also five, so that gives us a ten foot fire separation. Um, and I, I, first thing I did, it leaves you two bowling alleys on either side to to throw a football or something with your kids, so. I thought, ah, that.
Even eight feet wide, if I look at a thirty four inch door and I start looking at windows. I'm eating that up really fast, that's like an outhouse.
It 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 was really tight, so by that way, we worked out with the city. Is, as I asked. The owner, the developer's blessing to talk to the city and say, can I put the unit on the property line without having to do fire, all the? One hour, two hour fire, but then make sure it's covenanted so that the neighbor won't build within ten feet. So they're all shifted to one side. So that at least it left a ten foot area on one side. And a zero, but then it didn't, it didn't affect anybody with. The fire code, because you. You just don't want your houses.
Did they allow you to put a deck in that ten feet?
Um, no, they were, we did a deck out the front, but we 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 did a deck, but not off the side.
So we couldn't go on the side, so that ten foot.
Yeah, it's just, it was just yard, at least ten feet is a little bit, it's double the size, so.
I, I, I was just thinking that you. Where you, where you locate these cottage clusters is huge, like, you know, like I, I. I did, I've talked to you before, but I used to hang out there when I was a kid at that well, when it was a work still.
Okay, yeah.
And, uh, and it was wonderful and I like the new, what you've done with it. Uh, up there, um, but what I, the point I was gonna make was is that. Density, when you have a lake.
Yeah.
As a feature.
Yeah.
That you can go out on and escape and and have it, right, is different than if you put one of these cottage clusters downtown Cedar Willie and there's not a park within. Uh, ten blocks or eight blocks or something. Um, so those amenities of open space become really, really important. When you, uh, uh, when you don't have a huge natural, a good example for us is if we, if we built. Uh, cottage clusters over by Northern State complex. Hey, you know, the kids can run all they want, you know, it's, it's open till dusk every night, so.
Parks coming in too. Homestead Park is coming in too.
Yes, right, so, um, so the point being is that, you know, if you, if you have. Close by natural places where you can go, a lake or or a place like Northern State where you have lots of trails and, uh, and open space. Um, your, the size of your lots don't matter much, but when you're in an area like, uh, where it's already urbanized and, uh, and there's a lot of houses, like you said, it's just. Uh, you see it in every neighborhood in Cedar Willie and that's what standard lot size is, kids are all over the place, right? And, you know, they they'll find any, any space it looks like, uh, nobody's using it and and they're, they're using it, you know. Uh, and I was a kid once, like. But, uh, but you see my point, I mean, it becomes a lot more, it becomes a lot more important. Uh, where it's, where it's cited.
Yeah.
Wildwood, you have a beach, then you have a big open area next to the beach, and you have the community clubhouse. Yeah, you're good.
This being kind of a workshop kind of thing, I made a little diagram of what a typical. Little tiny home for cottage cluster home, C C sounds better than T H C. So, uh, cottage cluster, um, I drew it up so we could get an idea of what one acre looks like. And there's a lot of stuff missing on here that looks like it's a requirement. Um, and I just wanted to hopefully have enough for everybody. Um, your, your eyes will, uh, begin to focus on what this drawing is, which is.
It's a five foot setback for each unit from what I could tell you.
The setbacks are what is written in the code.
Okay.
All right, good job, right on that, okay. I got one for myself later. I'll explain what you're looking at, this is one acre, which is the maximum that we can do a C C. Cottage cluster. Uh, it's, uh, three hundred and thirty, the reason I picked that is because a typical five acres is three thirty by six sixty, so I took. You know, a chunk out of a three, a five acre lot, it's a hundred and thirty two feet deep. And I gave it a driveway because you gotta come and go, and I wanted to squeeze in twelve houses or eleven with a clubhouse. And in the middle is six thousand square feet of open space, which is a requirement. Which led me to a question, for every six homes, you have to have six thousand feet, so I'm gonna call this eleven homes and one clubhouse. Um, and half of them, six of them in the middle face the six thousand foot open space. The other three on one side and three on the other side, they don't have the open space, but it's not the requirement, just fifty percent. Um, each one has a driveway. Each, each home takes up about twenty four percent of the lot and and you said forty percent maximum, I don't know how anybody could get forty percent maximum. Because this. The setbacks to this house and the house is three hundred and eighty one square feet, it's twenty feet in the front setback. Uh, five, say ten in the back. And five on each side. So that is. The max you could squeeze on those little lots and each lot is. Uh, well, what, fifteen hundred and eighty four square feet each lot. Now, these would be classified as tiny homes because a cottage has to be four hundred square feet. So I think tiny homes could be. Two hundred and five feet or something. Okay, so since, since these are all under four hundred, then these would be considered. Tiny homes, but that's fine to have a tiny home in a. Uh, cottage cluster, right, because you can intermingle them. So. Um, there's no sheds on this. Now, I, I, I wrote here, where on here is there room for? Sidewalks, playgrounds, retention ponds, streetlights, power transformers or poles or all the other things that have to go with developments. Um. Because every square inch is taken up, now maybe those driveways could be minimized a little bit, but.
Yeah.
It could be.
I know fire departments requirements for access, um. Twenty foot, twenty foot wide driveway at minimum.
Code right now is twenty five feet, P R D, when the cluster went tighter.
Yeah.
So the road going in needs to be twenty five, he's got forty six.
I've got twenty seven on the main driveway and then each shared driveway between houses is forty six feet between. Okay, so that, that could be a sidewalk, if it could be narrowed out.
Sidewalk and maybe space for a shed too.
Yeah, so each, each house would have a sidewalk in front of it. And that, then you, that forty six then would be ten feet less, thirty six.
The code right now is twenty five.
But then what about trees? Do you have to have a planting area for trees along the sidewalk? So that forty six foot driveway is now twenty six. Less. I think these are the things that you brought up, that you wanted to see it visually, what, what it would look like.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's nice you did that, thank you.
Yeah, I just, it's a place to start.
Sure.
And.
Yeah, are, up at Wildwood, are you doing that, are you doing it that way or are you allowing them to do their own land, landscape plans and? Are you just giving them guidelines or?
They have guidelines and, um, they can do their own landscaping within the the guidelines. Um, they're allowed one. Six by eight shed. Um, and I think what else they can do.
If you guys want to do another field trip up there, it's definitely worth going up.
When it comes to sheds. I thought, oh, each one of these houses could have a shed built on the back of it, but then you read the code, it says a shed has to be ten feet away from the house, which would be in the neighborhood. So.
Yeah.
A wild, they literally had.
I, I, yeah, I, I would maybe. On that, good point, I, I would tuck maybe a shed closer, I, I don't know. Uh, Wildwood, they're. They're right up against.
Yeah, they're up against, typically you put a shed up against the house, but our code right now says ten feet.
Yeah, one, one other way you could kind of relook at this and and something that. Um, I'm working on with the letter that you received early on, um, in this meeting. A couple of different things you'd have to look at, A, the fire truck just turn around, so you need access, but then turn around, how's this gonna happen? Um, I see some dead ends, so I don't know, they may have their own input on that. Which takes up space. Um, but then. I don't know, I'm. I'm one for trying to take. Make multi-use out of things, because you, when you build small. You, every square inch counts and you can say, okay, well, the hammerhead is also, could be a park, throw a basketball net up there for the kids. So you can kind of dual function it a little bit. Um. Yeah.
One thing about Wildwood that needs to be mentioned here as well, if you do anything like. One thing about Wildwood that needs to be mentioned here as well, if you do anything like this. Pretty much all impervious surface up there, right?
Yeah.
So that, that was kind of like, uh, kind of like something that was really. Well thought out, and we're gonna be talking about that in a little while. And bioswells into our further discussion when we're talking about separations between sidewalks and curbs. Whether to manage stormwater a little bit better, because when you start doing densities like this, you're gonna, you still got water.
Right.
Here we go.
Yeah.
You still gotta deal with that.
Is there limitations on the sizes of the decks that you can put on? The homes I noticed at Wildwood, there was a lot of like, like two and three layer, like.
Yeah.
Space.
Yeah, so all the county said. All they were worried about was impervious area, so. They. They couldn't count. Either A was an oversight. I, I don't know where their logic came in, they didn't really count the unit itself. Um. And I think a lot of it had to do with the fact that it was originally a campground, which is. Why they were only allowed to do park models, because they had to be movable, just because it was a non-conforming zoning, because it's forestry. The, uh, long story short, the only thing that the county actually is inspecting is the side decks. Only thing they come up to inspect, they look at the roof, make sure that it's not more than two hundred and seventy square feet, which. Through all of the civil engineers' math and you, the University of Washington's math, they got involved in all of it. Coupled with the, the roads being pervious and having a, a gallery underneath of it all. Um. They came up with two hundred and seventy square feet and that's what the deck. That's not attached to the unit can be, and that's what they inspect. Why they chose that, I, I, I'm not the engineer, um, but they landed on that, so I can, it's hard for me to speak.
I was curious, and so I looked on Zillow, you know, and some of these, you know, decks were like completely enclosed and had laundry rooms and. You know, that like there was one house that was for sale, that, I mean, I wouldn't call it portable housing, they wanted like seven hundred. Yeah, but it had like an enclosed deck with a laundry room.
They put a lot of the decks up on roofs, which I thought was pretty cool, because you got those. So they did, they made the roofs actually decks, yeah, so really sweet, uh, yeah.
You gotta be careful with me, though, I like pushing the rules. No, I know, I mean, a little bit. Because a couple of those units were not allowed to build anymore, because we, at, at, at some point time. Um, we were building a couple of the models, um, with the whole idea of, oh, let's put the deck in the middle. Um, because we can only do four hundred square feet and we enclose it three sides and somebody put a barn door, well, it's still a deck in between, but when you close it off. Is it more square footage?
Yeah.
Ellen and I, after about twelve of those units, said, no, we're gonna change the rules, so. They're fine, so. But we.
It's okay to invite the barbarians and stuff.
Yeah, sometimes, I'm just, I, I, I'm just being honest, so.
You have a baby, you know, you want, I, I, because we have friends at property at Lake Taiyi, and there's a lot of people who, that's how they get away with adding on to their. Park models is they enclose a deck.
Yeah.
You know, they're limited to like. You know, certain square footage that they're allowed to.
Well, six months out of the year, that's, that's like theirs as well.
Yeah.
I think places like Taiyi and Wildwood, I said, what's called Wildwood, and Pillawamish, I've been to two of those three. They're, they're, um, they're like parks or what do you call it, campground, and a lot of times you're only allowed to be there six months out of the year. And a lot of times, these lots are three thousand, four thousand square feet, but we're talking, you know. Five hundred square foot lot, so it's, your building knowledge is awesome, it's, you know, that's great picking your brain there, but we, we have to do what you did. Like.
You've got things.
Inside this building right there.
Hundred percent.
I just have a couple of thoughts on, um. There are some really creative designs for driveways and, um, landscaping that, that I've seen. The cottage designs and, for example, you might be able to get the fire department to reduce the road width to twenty feet. Um, and some of them incorporate alleyways, so those can be narrow, so people are approached their homes, actually, so. The front of the home is actually on the street or facing the courtyard, and then the cars come in through the back. And so there's no cars there where, where the people are, um, they're at human scale. Um, also, these standards, because you don't have a minimum lot size, is that correct? Are really important to control that density and to, um, address neighbors' concerns. When there is a bit, there's some setbacks, there's landscaping, their drainage is being addressed. And, um, the appearance is being addressed with design guidelines, so. Um, that's just another way to think about those standards, and so there are gonna be some lots where a developer might come in and say, gosh, I'd like to get twelve, but. To comply all the standards, they may only get ten or eleven, but at least that's a compromise for the community. Yeah, so it's something to think about.
Yeah, I think capping it at twelve, you know, I, I'm not an expert on. Site layout, that sort of thing, so it's like, you know, if I don't envision all of the different. Ways that you can design this, then it's a cap, right? So you come up with some fancy one to do. Yeah.
Another thought, just on that, because we, we heard from the. The letter right into the, the general public comments, they're talking of two acre or more. Complex, so as far as ten foot rear setback, no, 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 we're gonna exceed like. Density, we're talking multiple acres. The back setbacks can't be ten feet from your neighbor's house, from Pat's house, like, you look over the fence and you got seven people living right there. So depending on the size and scope of the project, maybe we need to. Have a conversation about those rear setbacks as well as setbacks in generals on the corner of a larger project.
So you, you're asking to increase the minimum distance between structures?
Talking from a, from, from a boundary line.
Boundary.
Now, it gets, it, it takes away from the affordability, but I, but when. We were back in two thousand and one, when we first started talking about, uh. We were working on the comprehensive plan, one of the things that we did was we. We talked about having, and I think we kind of have it, uh, first, first person in thing, so like. If you have a residential neighborhood and somebody wants to build an industrial building next to it. Because they're the second one there and the houses already exist, they have to create one, a thirty foot setback, um, from the housing. So there's some kind of a buffer for trees or whatnot between the, the, the factory and. Uh, industrial land and, and the residential land. And you could do something like that with this, but it would cut way into the affordability, uh, affordability factor, every time we. You know, start, start talking about bioswells and all the things you put into a regular, uh, regular residential area. The, you, your, your affordability just, you know, goes. Uh, and, and so, um, I don't know how we reconcile that, but that's the big.
Think it's something more simple, right, where on the boundaries, that will be the place to put a planter strip. As well as the road, so more of a U-shaped access around the complex, instead of one in, down, down, down. So I'm just saying, let's, let's have that as a conversation. As, as this evolves, and it's evolving in a really good way, but this is a great example of what we kind of might not want to do. Bordering another residential.
Yeah, no, absolutely, yeah.
Tying into the, um, public comment, so she did say that there's three acres, but for the. So you're, so even if it's three acres, you're still only putting twelve units.
They can't do it if it's three acres.
They can't, because it, we max at one acre.
Max at one acres.
Maybe subdivide that for shadow plot.
That was something I did want to bring up is, um, do we wanna put a limit on how many of these you can put side by side? You know?
That's on my notes here, how, how much room do you need between two one acre parts?
Right, yeah, so, you know, something like you can't have a cottage cluster within, um, two thousand. Literer feet from another one or something like that.
Bring it back a step too, because I think they were talking about. To utilize parking lot area for some of this deployment as well. And that, that's kind of off the table, because the parking lot requirements are based on a whole separate set of code.
Right.
I can't take away.
Parking lots now and all of a sudden now that's. A development now, so.
It gets real, it gets real tricky too, um, uh, when we were looking. So, I don't want to give you a lot of history, but anyway, we, we, we put a moratorium on more. Land for apartment complexes, as we remember from, it's ago. And, uh, and then we were toying with the whole idea of saying that, um, couldn't have apartment buildings bigger than six units. And there could only be one of those per block. And it got really, really tricky at that point, because then it was like, how do you decide who gets to do the, the six unit apartment on that block? Some are, some are doing this for a while and they actually, um, I don't know if they're still doing it or not, but, uh, but we got it from them. And, uh, they just said, first one to think of it, do it, you know, this is the one for that block, yeah, first, yeah, first come, first served. Uh, but that was their limit, was that you'd only have one six unit apartment building per block. And, and then, uh, I think, I'm sure things have changed since then, that was back in. Two thousand four probably, yes.
But he's, you've got some designs, you've shown us. If, if I can be some, I, I, I've been working with Family Promise. Um. And it started a year ago and I had drawn an idea, I sketched out an idea for them. And maybe this is where, I don't know, this was. Bit of the trigger for this conversation, I, if I can invite you around my laptop or if there's another way I can present, I would. Happily present.
Uh, is it an item or like a, a web link?
Uh, no, I just have a PDF. Um.
He's got Bluetooth on his, uh, on his laptop, probably, can he Bluetooth it?
Sort of.
One of these monitors?
No, but if you email it to me, I can, uh, put it up on the screens for you guys.
You email it to him, he'll put it up for all of us. That'd be the best thing.
Yeah.
What's your, uh, email?
Uh, it is woody@cedro-woolly.gov.
Woody, W O O D Y.
Uh, W O O D Y.
E Y. At D Y. Cedro respected dash, Cedro dash.
Yep. Doing that. For future use.
Nicole already passed it, she's already trademarked it.
Well, we're waiting for that, Nicole, um, um. Oh, uh, is every. Is every house still required to hook up to, uh, to power? Or can you be standalone, can you put in the solar project on the property and, uh, and just run off of your own or? I suppose most people, uh, uh, you know, they're tired, so they get money back from the power company, but. But I'm curious whether you could, uh, put these in if they have self-contained solar, because solar's getting really good now. The next generation of it, I think, you don't need any kind of, to. To charge.
It's great stuff, I did a couple of projects out of Coopville, it's, it's amazing, the costs have dropped like ten cents on the dollar what it used to be.
But it's a single family residence, yes, we do require this to be individual, but, um, you know, AD users are allowed to share. But, yeah, we haven't really, we haven't really talked about solar too much, there's nothing really in the code or anything like that regarding.
That's always been considered, uh, undoable on the west side, but it's not anymore. Uh, and then the other thing I was gonna say was, I think, uh, in the original some, uh. The original.
So, we'll put it on a USB.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
In the original cul-de-sac neighborhoods in the, in the fifties, they, uh. I'm pretty sure that they were designed so that, um. When the fire truck came in, it did not have to go down the cul-de-sac. Uh, it was designed on the, on the fact that the truck was carrying enough hose that they could get to a unit at the back end of the cul-de-sac. Uh, from, from their truck, and so, uh. Yeah, uh, I don't know, I, I don't know if the city of Cedar Willie fire code that well, but we might look into that, so maybe. Like, so something like this, you don't have to be able to hit down the alleys to, to the houses, maybe they're short enough that they just.
Thank you.
They can stretch their hose.
Like I know when we do, uh, like fire, fires review of, I'm thinking more commercial projects, but they're, they're looking at access and they say. They have to be hundred and fifty feet, no more, like the furthest point to that they can reach with the host.
Okay, so if your alley's up to a hundred and fifty feet, then, then you're probably fine, if, uh, if one of them.
Yeah, that's a good thought. Yes. I think maybe our, our code could use a little bit more language on solar, because we, we really don't know. What to do when someone's like, I'd like to put solar, uh, do I need a permit for that? I'm like, well. Sure you do, but I don't know.
Why would you need a permit for that?
I think you just, I think you just have to have. Have to have the electrical inspection.
I will just say that we, um, we did put, uh, uh, solar in this last year.
Hmm.
And we did not need it, this was in the county, so. We did not need a permit for the panels that were mounted on the roof, the barn roof, actually. But we also needed to do a ground mount in order to get our hundred percent power generation. And the, that's why I'm out, needed, uh, building from God, so that's how they're doing it at the county.
It's probably would be the same.
Did you have to get an electrical permit to hook it up to the house?
It's probably not one I'd expect.
So I have that image up for you guys.
There, there were electrical inspections, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, I can, I can kind of talk my way through, the, the, the main caveat is this was done a year ago. And this doesn't have. This is, this is, doesn't mean that this is what Family Promise wants to do, this was them asking me what. My idea, and that's what I put down on paper, and. From there, everything still needs to be considered and, and whatnot, so this doesn't mean that if Family Promise comes back. With something totally different, this is just me spitballing an idea. So caveats, caveats aside. Um, we have, I was given this property to look at what, what would I do if I owned the property? So, kind of carte blanche, I'm like, okay, well, I would like to put some units around the back edge. Um, to leave an open space in the middle for soccer or frisbee or whatnot, that's kind of the idea with the open space. Um, my idea was. To use the parking, the existing parking, um, so I don't have to pay more to make more parking and add extra roads. I'm using what's already there, um, as infrastructure to keep the costs down on something like this. Um, I, I was led to believe that there was. Maybe not much use at the, the United Methodist Church, but if somebody is an attendant there, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Um. In a perfect world, if this church was vacant. And for their particular use, I thought, how wonderful of a, a situation where you have an existing building that has a sanctuary. Probably has a kitchen, I've not been inside, that can support families. Um, if mom and, or dad or whatever has to go to work and you got kids, you can have daycare in there. Um.
The room on the, the room just above, uh, on the right side of the, of the church there in the back on the top.
Yeah.
Is, uh, is, is like a community, is a community hall.
Okay, yeah, so.
Kitchen.
So it, it can be used kind of multifunction to building, because, uh, and, and if they're still using it, great. I mean, six days out of the week, maybe i- is, has a lot less use, um. And so you get that, the benefit of that, and then the weekends, yeah, maybe mom and dad aren't working, um, and they can be around. Um. And what I'm showing here is that, that green area was that the fire truck kind of turned around, um. It would take up some parking, I can't see within the, the shadows of the trees about how much I'm taking, but that was a concept. Um, I would have to add a fire hydrant in the back. As long as the fire department was happy, I would have a hose bolt, they have a hose bolt limit. Um, to the back corners, just to make sure that they can get there in the, in, in the event of a fire. I fear if I pulled everything in from the property lines, I have it shown as ten feet right now. If I pulled it in, it will make. A backyard, but it would take away from the center yard, um, so you get a bit of a, a tug of war there. Um, the utilities, I tried to run as straight and simple as possible, um. With water in blue and green as sewer, um, and keeping those separate, except for that one crossing, you double sleeve it. Um, I do have some sidewalks going to each. Um, unit, and then also was a sidewalk extending to the church to the south. Uh, in the event they get that one, I, there was talk there. I, that, that, that was just kind of high level, um, of what you could do. Um, whether it's all those size units, I just kind of rinsed and repeated. Um, whether it's all those size units, I just kind of rinsed and repeated. Whether or not this is too dense, I this was none of this was built but when I built this.
What is the square footage of each of those moves?
Those that that I took our Bellevue unit and it's four hundred square feet on the main floor. Um, with that two hundred fifty square foot law sleeping law.
Our challenge is looking at this. You've just changed the code in the high density. So you're the house. Your house is right across from the church. Next thing you know, you're looking at fifteen houses. That's not what the original code was.
Yeah, so that's.
Well, these these are these are big things. This is in the middle, nowhere. This could be literally right there in the middle. Town where now it's it's nothing but an extension of R fifteen in a different way, the way I'm working.
Do you know the approximate square footage of the space? Do you need any? Is that one acre there basically?
Um, I can put, I I I don't, uh but I can track with some dimensions for you.
And they're trying to buy the Bethlehem Lutheran Church. Uh next door.
I I think so. That was the letter. It's more than I, the letter says more than I know.
I could have been. I do recall that conversation and reviewed it.
They would have a completely different. Yeah, so so would we need to include? Zones outside of.
One of the sad things I've seen is that you can, I've seen really, really dense. Building that was really, really nice and much better actually than stuff that had much bigger sites on them. But there's no way to, there's no way to control, when you make a rule at a planning commission or at a city level. You don't get to pick who uses it. Anybody can use that rule, right? So you know, if it was a really well-known. You know, designer or person, you've just a building person who who has a good sense of what they're doing. They could build a really beautiful project very, very densely and it could be highly functional for people, very attractive to people. Neighborhoods would never complain about it and the next guy would come in and it'd be complete schlock. And 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 it would be terrible, even if it was only at half the density. And that's that's always the the struggle at our level is that. Is the density doesn't mean anything, but it but it does in rules.
And we learned from our mistakes, we we looked at other projects that were permitted thirty plus years ago and. What they became, we're not going down that road again. That's why I was referring to U B M U as one not of. Which projects looking really good. You don't know until you know they're deployed in the building, like, okay. We create the Brian Frankenstein or something like frozen.
Well, I went by the other day. Sorry, I don't mean to hold up the. You got your numbers. Uh I was gonna say, I went by the other day and I feel vindicated now. The parking lot at five o'clock at night was, there was probably about four spaces left. And I was like, yeah, uh huh, you were smart.
That was a non-negotiable item.
So I've I've never permitted a church before. Uh so I had to look this up, but I was um. It's not really outwardly. Stated in the permitted uses, but when you go down and read about your maximum building height. In the R seven zone, for example, um it does mention that there's no height limit for church steers, so I'm.
Depending what code you look at.
So what I'm thinking, you know.
Yeah, religious organizations in a lot of other jurisdictions.
The it looks like Woody is right on top of where I was when I scaled it up. I'm at just for the grass area. Um, he's at one fifty eight or two fifty eight, I'm at two fifty six. And one twenty eight from the back line to the asphalt. And I've got, so it's thirty two thousand square feet. Um, so that's just that square grass, so. Thirty two thousand unless you start counting some of the parking area that you can. Potentially use or you get some sort of parking agreement, because I know we've done parking agreements, so maybe there's.
That they're outright, outright residential zones, religious.
Normally a church is always conditional use.
Really?
At least that's what we run into every time we run. It's always. Conditional use and they're pretty much allowed to be put anywhere. I I built them in egg zones, so I have anyway.
Thank you, that's, yeah.
Wasn't there a discussion two years ago about putting homeless camps on church properties, provided it was? So big or something.
Yeah, well, we're working really hard to try and solve the homelessness problem and and so they're trying everything to 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 get it done and. Be nice to find one that that works with them and for the community.
That was just an idea, so uh. I don't know, so it's. It didn't take away or didn't add a ton of impervour. Impervious area other than the units themselves and sidewalks. I'm just trying to use what's existing and things. I will see it.
So that's more of a communal thing where they don't necessarily have individual.
Correct, that was the difference, yeah.
And that that would be allowed, the way the code's written, it's more dense and they're packed in there. The setbacks and things like that that we've included in these drafts aren't. On that example, but um.
But that could be a way to.
But that could be a way to redesign it. So you still have your open space. You have a communal parking lot, just with blockways to each individual. Houses entrance.
Is there a way to, is there? As you have it, I haven't read all of it, so uh as you have it written, is there a way to conditional use? That so that when you do have somebody who. Puts a lot of thought into the process, there's a way for them to to do an all the thing. See, I see this is a really, really good use. I mean. If if the church expanded, that was always just gonna be a parking lot there, you know, so oh boy, we can put in thirty more parking spaces. Uh and but it's got the the open space. Scott already got basically with the community kitchen, used to be there, the or is still. In the uh uh in the uh. The back hall, in the back hallway there. Uh. That's a really nice amenity area, right? So you got the little tiny cottages there. Kids can play in the middle there. Everybody could go over and can have a. communal meal in the in the in the church's thing if they arrange it with the church. Um, you know, it's a really nice setup, better than you could probably get on a raw piece of land out in the middle of. Nowhere for the same same price. You know, some room for kids to play without having to leave the area. So where I wouldn't like this somewhere else, I I like this on this on this spot.
It's hard to make things work, not not another, no, I, there's a struggle.
Well, that's why the design standards and landscaping standards help a little bit. To just make it a little bit more appealing for the neighbors. They know there's gonna be a little bit of a buffer and they're looking at a. Of buildings that are relatively attractive. That really helps a lot. One thing um I really like what Nicole did too is um. The uh friend of mine who is um one of the original cottage designers, Ross Chapin. And Nicole had a chance to talk to him. I don't know if he did.
Yeah.
One of the things he mentioned that was a lesson learned when he first started doing cottage codes. Back in twenty twenty-five years ago is that they were all kind of the same size. And a lot of developers were not building them and one of the reasons was because of that. And so he. Is now working with communities to kind of change your code to allow a variety of sizes, um so that if. If you have a single person who needs a unit or if you have a small family, that they can all live together. And um which makes more of a more cohesive community. So that's that's something I noticed that you put in the code, so.
Did he do the one that Langley?
He did.
He's one of the early ones. Yeah, yeah, Langley is is really nice.
The other thing he brought up on that note, um which is just such a struggle for every community is that those. They're so damn cute that the demand is so high, if they have them in Coopville now, I mean, they're selling for. Between five and six hundred thousand dollars.
And I think this is our our main concern is because the Anna Fortis does allow. Uh cottage clusters now and we've talked with the builder who's got a project in the works and. And the the sale price is gonna be six hundred thousand dollars a piece. And that doesn't, you know, it's so encouraging to hear all of you. Your focus has been on the affordability. And um that's really encouraging, but there is this risk that the whole. Thing could get co-opted by market rate construction, so I don't know. How do you, how do you do that? How do you fix that?
Yeah, whoever buys it, the market's gonna set the right. Yeah, all this stuff is gonna get go up with this, sorry, and the stuff that is sloppy will fall apart and uh and get replaced this.
I I was concerned about uh some corporation going in and buying all the houses and just renting them out for high dollars. And I thought, you know, you have that stipulator bonus housing if somebody, if it's a self-help bill. And I think Habitat for Humanity does all their houses with the owners, eventual owners helping, they have to pitch in. I almost wanna put that in the code too, that all of them have to be that way in order to keep the price down, to keep the corporations coming and buying them. Um, and because if sweat equity, how else can, what better way to get an affordable house than to? Pitch in yourself. I mean, if I wanna afford something, I have to do it myself. And if you, somebody can't help, they can at least, you know, hold a light for somebody that building it for them, you know. Be there on the site. So I like the self-help aspect. So I'm gonna play devil's advocate here. I got my real estate, right? Because that's what I do. So I'm a property owner. I own an acre, okay? My code says I can do tiny home or whatever we're calling it, cluster, okay? I'm gonna maximize every dollar I put into it because of a couple factors. Number one, infrastructure, getting the water in there, the power in there. Sanitation in there is a massive cost. Okay, so on top of the cost of the dirt, and you know this, right? Anything or anything, but yeah, Habitat for Humanity, they do a great thing, but you can't control the private market. Right? That's a totally separate thing. We're just trying to get something in place that whatever happens there. Doesn't look like going down Wicker, you know, you have the older, you know, mobile home or whatever you wanna call that. But not like a, we say it. But also we have community groups such as churches and things like that that already have the land.
Gonna say, uh, this is a perfect example.
Already have the land. We wanna make sure that whatever goes in there is complying with the same guy designing. So, yeah.
Four houses on the left of this are, those are all scattered habitat for humanity, self-built homes, or not self-built homes, but uh. That owner equity.
I hear a reading, they have a couple uh. What is that? Vikings? There's like five of them. They can all have guys. It looked the same though, just different colors.
Church property or something? So the church, search, the church subdivided and sold four houses on the left to uh Habitat for Humanity. And then they came in and there was a long process in the church and with the and the owners come up with. The design of which homes, how they would orient and all that kind of stuff so that uh so that they were compatible with the church. And then, like I said, the the other part back here was always just like, oh, you know, uh in the conversation, devil's football parking. Uh back there and.
They share the driveway with the church?
Yes, yeah, it's shared, right?
That's very clever.
And again, it was all about trying to find.
Yes. Yeah, Joe, along that same line of having people put in their own sweat equity. There might be another benefit, like you you can cast another or give, give land trusts some sort of benefit as well. They're they're there to hold that. Land affordable. Having done a little bit with caution and and whatnot, um I I I really like what they're doing and. They hold the land and, yeah. The seller can only sell at three percent or whatever the market has increased and not anymore. So, yeah, whether it's the sweat equity element, um but I would also add to that and say, oh, if they are an affordable housing. Organization that they can have some sort of benefit as well. Yes. Us free market people try and maximize everything if 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 it's for profit, so um but.
We're talking about this application for a church, but if I'm a homeowner and I have an acre of property. And I want to put some. Cottages on my property and rent them out.
Nothing is stopping you from doing that. The code's gotta be consistent for everybody. Just can't say, oh, you're a private homeowner and we're only gonna do it for the churches. That's like, that's lawsuit material right there. It goes in code. Private with church, it doesn't matter as to be.
So we could then potentially see, you know, out in addition to developers coming in. For empty parcels, we could also see homeowners that have vacant property.
But they'd still have to be, you know, that's the whole thing. We're kind of changing our densities to more high density. And zones that weren't supposed to be higher density than they already are.
Yeah, you know.
That's that fine line.
It's the ownership is the difference, right? So.
Well, but you're owning, you're owning the tiny homes, cottages and renting them out. That sounds like an ADU.
ADU, you have to have a single family residence in place first, the ADUs can.
Yeah.
But the structure is the same. You're you're absolutely, you're spot on. That's what I'm saying, we have a lot of stuff around Coop where that stuff all right.
And then we're increasing density.
So instead of having one ADU, then you'd have, you know, if you had a half acre, you could have twelve, eleven.
Right.
Interesting thing about R fifteen, you're actually losing density now because maximum twelve.
Yeah.
So you just lost three houses.
Oh, yeah, wow, right.
Well, that's that's the difference of staying on your single story as opposed to going.
Right, and they're and they're different uses, but ones for, ones for a completely different demographic than the other, right?
Yeah.
So um. So that makes two. I was gonna piggyback on what you said, the uh the city of Phoenix, I just saw a thing where the city of Phoenix did um. Not tiny, the not tiny, but just small homes uh on a piece of land and they did it through a trust. And that trust, like you said, owns the land and everybody who buys a house in there. When they get ready to sell that house, cannot ask more than forty percent less than what the market value would be for that house. So it always will be sixty percent less in uh uh to to buy than any other house on the market. And the lines for them are gonna be insanely high. They're really nice, nicely done. So, yeah, that seemed like a good method to.
You had a conversation with the uh city representative college place and they're doing that too. So you're seeing it pop up around Washington. You mentioned Colts, somebody mentioned Colts.
Yeah, there's a whole bunch of them. San Juan County has two of them.
Uh okay, so it's a thing that's happening. Now, how would, so what do you, would, what, how would that work here?
In in this, in this particular case, I believe they want that the entity wants to own them. And this would be more for transitional housing. So I'm not saying that these would be for homes. This this wouldn't be for homeownership. Um, this would be, and and I don't know. Guess what the idea is that they would graduate out of this program?
We talked about different guidelines when we were doing that earlier, about drug use, the amount of time you can have. Temporary camping. So that's the whole thing why we really need to approach this with a lot of caution. For certain uses, there's a whole host of social issues that go along. This is in like what they did up at the. This isn't like what they did up at the wild. This is totally different.
Yeah, but, yeah, and I would be careful to say, like, and 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 to family promise, yeah, you don't, or or you you want to be careful bringing in social issues. But in the spirit of loving our neighbors or self, um, just trying to make sure that at least they have a program in place, kind of like you have wording in here that you want to approve the HOA verbiage, you would have maybe some wording in there that you want to approve their program, saying, well, I I don't know.
No, no, but we have that.
They can't hit this level, do you? Okay.
So we did our, actually, it started with the mayor. She was up in uh Anna Portis, this is about a year ago. And all of a sudden, there was a homeless encampment in the parking lot in one of the local churches. It turned out that church said, well, guess what? We don't need to really care what you out of Portis thinks because you have nothing on your books. State of Washington does. So the church deferred to the state of Washington. And that came back to us saying, hey, we better get something on the books now, and we did. And so for, you know, things like this where this is permanent, where in our other situation, I think it's a six-month maximum, so it's kind of like a a temporary permit, but yes, there were all kinds of management issues in there as far as camp bringing certain campers. Uh, there was a whole host of things that went along with that camp. Right now, it's not in front of me, but it was quite the uh punch list of things that needed to be accommodated by the host.
Right.
Okay, in order to have that kind of activity.
Right, so, yeah, they've got to be enrolled in, no drug use or no, they've got to have a proven background before they're allowed here. That sort of stuff. I can't speak to that, but maybe having family promise.
We already have that for that, so it'll be a combination of that depending on what we're looking at, so.
And the way it's seventeen one twenty one one oh is written, it's kind of saying uh preserve and maintain community facilities and open space, every cottage cluster should have a homeowners association or similar association acceptable to the city, so that kind of catches all the. So I do want to bring everyone's attention to time.
This is a whole other.
Yeah, um, so we could, we could uh opt to table the second item to the next meeting.
Okay, so we can talk trees next month, do that.
We can talk trees next month.
Great. I got so much to say.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I think maybe we wrap this up, cut this at eight thirty. Is everybody okay?
And this is just a work session anyway.
Just a work session. We can do this again at another time, you know, I'd love to have everybody's mental places back again and kind of do something similar.
Yeah, Patrick, when this first came up too, I didn't even catch up, I apologize. We said we got to take our time on this. We knew this was coming at us. So this is gonna be one of the things more like a PRD kind of exercise. This is not gonna happen overnight because we're looking at different examples of things, right? Private market versus other types of uses and things. So, yeah, this is, this is, this is, this is great. Raymond, again, this is so fantastic, perhaps somebody that actually does it, physically creates that product so we can really understand what we're dealing with and what our options are, right? So it's been immensely helpful. Thank you.
Nick, I have to say a quick question. I noticed you had some uh density bonuses in here. Did um y'all have a discussion about whether you only get those when they're permanently affordable? I mean, that would be one way to provide an incentive.
There's a table right now, so it has not been discussed.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, and then, of course, overseeing if they may stay permanently affordable, that's a whole different hat, you know, the situation, but.
You know, a lot of communities do exactly that. Shoreline does the same thing around the uh, like rail stations, they'll give you a they'll give you a density bonus, like seventy-six feet in their one zone is cap. But to let you go to a hundred and thirty-five, as long as forty percent of the units or something like that, twenty-five percent of the units are sixty percent of the King County average, which is like a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So if you're sixty percent of the hundred and thirty grand, that's affordable housing. Not Tennessee.
I would wanna, I would wanna look into um this, this whole thing with the, with the land trusts is why can't we do the same thing? Why can't we put, you guys, the community developer, you guys might actually know this stuff, but why can't we put those same limits that they're putting on? Why can't we say on the face of their plat or their deed or whatever, that uh you you can only sell this, because this was built this way because it was supposed to be affordable housing and you got a bonus, blah, 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 blah. You can never, this piece of property can never be sold for more than um forty percent of the going rate of of a uh of this property if it wasn't. You get what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I mean, why can't that be put on the, on the flats of houses that are all?
I don't see any reason why not. I mean, but that's.
And I say that all of the time when we're looking at affordable housing units.
Yeah, I mean, that seems like the way to do it. I mean, yeah, it's gonna be, it might be eighty thousand dollars now and two hundred thousand dollars ten years from now, but that's always gonna be sixty percent less than what somebody else is paying out of it.
Well, here's a good situation, right? So you have a religious organization or whatever, wants to do fifteen units for transitional housing, right? So you want to make sure that there's some brakes in there that says, okay, if that congregation changes, and they do, okay, they do sell their land at a premium, because I dealt with several of them in my career, okay, that that stuff is bulletproof in there, that they're no longer beastable, have to be a group, they still have to adhere to certain criteria because they did get those types of accommodations when they put them together. So you're, I see that. The answer is yes, that we could do that, but that needs to be drafted by
Right, certainly.
city attorney or actually uh, uh, it would be more of a, somebody on the real estate side.
I'd like to ask Nikki about legal limitations on that sort of thing, just so we cover the bases, but um, yeah.
Just throwing it out there, because it sounds like a good way, it sounds like the trusts are onto something.
Yeah, I think it's because it detours people that are coming in to build for profit and it keeps it focused on affordability.
And also do not the benefit of doing it a particular way, you get the thing that you don't just make a killing when uh when you go out, that you perpetuate that, that percentage of of savings, uh.
But that would only be if they took the density option. It doesn't preclude somebody from coming in and still grabbing that acre and not looking for density bonus or anything like that.
Is forty percent market value like the the typical thing you've seen, those land trials?
I've only heard of it, I'd only heard of it once, because I I I I'm not into the law of it that much. I I just saw it on a uh Kirsten Dirksen uh does the little videos on all kinds of housing stuff all over. She went to Phoenix, and the one that she was, was working uh, working with a land trust, and they were holding the 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 prices of the units at forty percent, and that they said that would be importunity. So people are gonna line up to buy those units, they're gonna stay as long as they can, and then they know going in that they're only gonna make forty percent of whatever going price is for uh, for uh, for homes and the.
And there is a home, there is a land trust, a home trust here in Skagit, so it would be good to check and see what they do with their.
I can think of multiple examples, Swinimish Reservation. So you're basically leasing the land. So you'll see those properties, they're beautiful houses, but they're going for maybe fifty percent of what you would pay for a similar house for the simple with unleased tribal land. So we have examples all over the place. You have certain land trusts, Skagit Land Trust, they don't want development, they want houses off of it.
Yeah, that's the concentration.
You want to be hanging out on their properties because they're really nice.
So Channel Cove in in La Conner, um, there were individual homes that could be owned for, you know, like helping out first-time buyers, maybe lower income, and then there were also multifamily units, and it's very nice. I I uh went down there a few times when we were trying to figure out this address. And um, the uh, it also, there was, there was a private access road, but they um, you know, kind of similar uh to your kind of mock-up in the sense that they're oriented, you know, sidewalks connecting, and they didn't necessarily, from what I recall, the the access road was on the back, so maybe there was some automobile access, but it seemed like there was uh parking away from, it wasn't like the actual unit, but it's been a while.
Is that on tribal land? Is La Conner, is La Conner, I think, just.
No, it's owned by home, well, it was owned by a home trust of Skagit, I believe. And before that, it was another um one uh who uh is on.
Shelter Bay is the one that's on the reservation.
That's exactly the one I figured out.
Yeah, now, this one is actually within the city limits of the town of La Conner. It's uh over near uh Maple Street, as you go um in the south.
No, while you're hand scratching, is that they can't be rented. I would like to see something in the code. Like, if we're trying to make affordable housing, I wouldn't want somebody to come in, buy up five units and then check the right way out of them.
Right, and the point is for people to get in and start.
Yeah, the whole point is affordable housing for somebody to be like a, you know, a landlord or, you know, because they got, they had the money, they just went in and bought it with cash, and now they're renting it for a premium.
You want pure hearts here, people just looking for a easy, a cheap way in and then.
Or a cheap way to get advantage of.
Hey, let's be a little bit careful here. So you're saying to limit this type of housing only to certain groups that are going to abide by other regulations?
Or maybe we could put it in the HOA that they can't be rented.
Saying that needs to be discussed by not us, but by.
Ask Nikki.
Yeah, because you're saying that private land, private landowner, somebody else, they're willing to do something, they can take those advantages, but I can't. I'm just saying, we need to be really careful.
Well, I mean, how would it really be any different than saying, you know, our ADUs, we can't use them for short-term rentals, that sort of thing, and we don't regulate them else, but.
You know, we wouldn't even know because we don't even have a facility that we even leased a number of ADUs that are out there right now, right? Yes, several months ago. We don't, people, I know people, my old neighbors, the neighbors that are next to me, right? They're living in a garage back there. Yeah, that is not permitted at all.
Just going back to these points, one reason why they have a land trust, because there, it does take a lot of work to administer all this stuff, because um, when, um, in order to buy a home that's on a land trust, you have to be below a certain income. You have to qualify, and then, yeah, you're not allowed to rent, and um, you can sell it, but generally not at, generally there's a timeframe too before you can sell it. It's three years and three to five years, and then you have to follow the formula for resale, which is maybe, you know, sixty percent, seventy percent. Um, and but you can pass it on to your children.
You can't?
You can't.
Yeah, so you can only have it for three or four years?
Right, yeah, yeah. So um, you can't pass it on to a family member. Um, but all that, you know, manage, and then the land trust owns the land underneath the home, and they lease it back to the homeowner for five dollars a year. But there's quite a bit of management that goes on to ensure that these rules are followed. And so that's where the land trust plays such a great role, because um, you know, some jurisdictions just don't have the capacity or the staffing to do that kind of management. Just something for you guys to think about.
You know, a lot of stuff is already in place, like uh, a lot of manufactured homes, they don't own the land underneath them. So the county comes in and they'll give a different tax bill to the group that owns the land. I had a situation, it was a seventy-five-year-old guy, and he kept getting the tax bill, kept tossing it in the garbage because he was saying, well, I'm paying this to the, to the, to the HOA, right? And they actually tax your units separately than the underlying land. They didn't know it, it caused all kinds of problems. They were ready to take his unit and all that kind of stuff. He's like, we'll pay it now. Well, yeah, there's, there's so many different ways. We could talk all night about this and it's gotten late, so. Yeah, should we wrap it up?
Could you wrap on the last comment? Are you were trying to speak up?
I was just gonna say what she was saying, that oftentimes in those situations, rather than saying, sell it sixty percent or forty percent, is that you you can only sell to somebody at sixty percent of median or whatever else.
Yeah, so that was a thought we're seeing.
There are always many percentages because things change.
Zero to fifty AMI, or whatever. I got a lot to think about. Yes, thank you. Oh, yes.
So next, we'll come back with additional comments and and ideas in response to today's group session. What were some, okay, plus the street trees, and if we get to it, great, if we don't, we don't, okay.
Let's do trees first because they're gonna be faster.
That'll be a good one, yeah.
Okay.
I I had a couple.
Don't maybe me.
I had a couple comment questions on the proposed regulations. When did that mean be appropriate tangent like this?
Yeah, because we're gonna do this all over again. Is it on the tiny homes you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, you want to write it down and bring it up? Give me the floor first next month.
Yeah.
I mean, we're gonna be talking about this a lot, even at the next meeting. So we got plenty. We're getting kind of late, and we're gonna table the next thing, so.
So this will be a work session again, so we invite you all to come up.
This is helpful for me because we'll be drafting up your policy language for the housing element more in the cities. So um, what you would like to see in the future in terms of types of housing, um, is very helpful so that we know what kind of policies to draft up.
Great.
For your review.
And you're the combined challenge because according to the state, we need to accommodate all twenty-four thousand people by twenty thirty-six. We got people with pitchforks right now because our roads, infrastructure, and everything else, so that's a whole other argument for a different day, because it turns into being an argument sometimes, because different people prefer different lifestyles, and we've had this discussion before about the state of Washington mandating things that are quite frankly, I think it should be a little bit more long-距离, but I was, I'm not saying anything about the [inaudible 0:14:24]. But we need to be compliant with, yes.
And we have to accommodate all the different income.
The housing element.
Yeah, and accommodate different.
Different income levels, which is the first thing, first time we've ever had to do that too, which makes it a little more challenging.
We're gonna look at our carbon for two buttons. That's a whole new element on top of that.
So, that being said, uh.
We're good, we're done with the guys.
Quick question.
Yes.
Do we have to move to table the tree standards? I think we do.
Oh, yeah, those in favor, well, we're, we're done with the cottage clusters. Those in favor of uh tabling the um, opposed amendments?
Make a motion that we table the tree standards until the the July, whatever.
I'll second that motion. Okay, then we are tabling uh tree standard. Any further discussion? Oh, any further discussions? There never is, but, okay. Uh, then, that being said, we will table the tree standards till next, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I always forget that part. Those opposed, say nay. So many. You gotta repeat yourself over and over. First from Commissioner Huggins and the second from Commissioner T Z. The unit there picked that up. All right, uh, new business, we're gonna throw that one out. And uh, oh, yes.
We do have new business. So on um July fifteenth, we'll have our open house for our comprehensive plan. Um, and that will be at the library, starting at six P M. Um, and so we invite all of you to come and uh participate in that. Um, and I'll send the same announcement to city council too, uh, just then because it'll be a quorum, we'll make sure we cover the public vote as part of this. But um, there's that, so July fifteenth, which is a Monday. And then on August twentieth, uh, we have our joint meeting between planning commission and city council. Let me make sure I've got that date right.
At six o'clock or six-thirty. It's usually earlier for some reason.
Okay, August twentieth, that's a good question. Typically, you guys start at six-thirty, and they start at six, but it is a Tuesday.
It'll probably be at six.
Okay, we'll confirm that, but that's August twentieth, and that'll be um, here. Yeah.
Who's what? What's on August? Planning Commission, Council.
One question about, we're gonna get to see a copy of what you're gonna present at the library six o'clock.
At the open house? Um, yeah, we can send it ahead of time.
I mean, I want to see it because we'll plan to ensure that someone comes up to me. We're excited about the survey.
Yeah, well, um, first time, we're, basically, it's an introduction.
Okay.
So we're gonna do uh growth management one-on-one.
Okay, these are the different elements.
Right, exactly, what a comp plan is.
Right, okay.
And then we'll talk about the new requirements. And then we'll talk about the new requirements, um, that's different from last time. And then what we're thinking of doing, and we're still, still working out the format, but having people break out into different. We're gonna have three or four different like stations or tables where people can go and talk about, and we're gonna ask different questions. We'll have a table on housing, and for example, we may ask people, where would they like to see higher debt city housing in town? Um, and we'll have maps up, so they can put sticky notes up there or provide, and we'll have a comment form. And so just to allow people to have more one-on-one conversations, um, sometimes people are more comfortable in that format.
So I think it would want one of us to staff, depending on, we're gonna do. I think that would be appropriate too, because we're the ones that charge up. So maybe we would get together ahead of time and take a look at it, come up with a plan of exactly how we would wanna do that.
Yeah, yeah.
I missed that part.
And it's coming up quickly, so.
I'm just saying to have one of us, whoever we are, I love them, absolutely. It's like my dipcom plan, we miss a good way. So to to get different members of planning commission together, to staff the different element booths. As to whatever material we come up with, if somebody has a question, whatever, right? Because we're the ones that are gonna be making the decisions on it at some point. In the future, so they can put a face to who we are.
Great idea.
That's tough, when you're trying to get people to like, okay, brainstorm, but what are we brainstorming?
You know, because there's gonna be questions, well, yeah, we're, we're working on that. It's, this is what the process is all about. It needs to be done by such and such a time. These are the people working on, please come to the meetings, okay? Read what's going on with the agendas. We love hearing. We're doing things that are like, excuse me, where is everyone?
Yeah, we'll just propose something really controversial and that'll.
Well, yeah, you only have five different ways of commenting.
So we'll send out um, a notice to everybody and and put that in the paper and do the public notice part of this open house. And then also, we're sending out a survey ahead of time.
Yeah, we have a community, it's gonna be, thank you for bringing that up. Um, it's gonna be out on Survey Monkey. And we'll, we'll probably have it out by next week, maybe. Yeah, it's really close. Um. And it's gonna be so to help you formulate your vision for the comprehensive plan, uh, on what. It's very general questions, like what do you love about Cedar Woolley? Um, what would you like to see? What, how would you like Cedar Woolley to feel like and look like in twenty years? I think very.
This is going out to the public.
This is going out to the public, yeah. And then we'll summarize all the responses and um. And so you'll have that information early when we start going, when you start formulating your vision statement. And looking, working on every element, because that's what's gonna guide the policies.
See the smile on my face? It's not a smile in the back of my mind. Oh, that's great. Yeah, that is great. People actually have to say. Like, okay, hear what you're saying. We're agreeing with you. However, the state says that we need to figure out how this is gonna happen. Based upon the criteria that they're telling us we're in public, then that's where that whole challenge really comes in.
So, survey and for the notice, uh, we have everybody's email. We'll send it out to you, but feel free to share it with people too. You know, and we're compiling our email contacts list, so of course we have all of yours, but um. And we'll try to make it a pretty healthy list, but please share it too.
Good, thank you. Anything else in uh, new business?
A kind of point of clarification, since you mentioned the joint uh, council meeting is going to be on August twentieth. When uh, the calendar invites were sent out earlier this year, um, it was scheduled for the fourth. So just kind of saying that's no longer happening on September.
That's correct. We're changing that date um, at the next.
That's right, it wasn't.
It almost always moves, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for bringing that up, that we talked about.
Usually it wanted to be later, not earlier.
We wanted it to be earlier, because of the cop plan process being a lengthy one. They're expecting us to have this done by June of twenty twenty-five. We wanna get started earlier rather than here.
Yeah.
June's almost over.
I know.
Yeah, that's scary.
We have a year to do this. Wow, okay. Anyway, thank you all for including us in the.
I I'd just like to say what an impressive bunch you are.
We actually care.
Come back to our next meeting and to the open house and to the uh, joint meeting too, August. Yeah. Thanks for being here. Good, great, thanks.
Okay, uh, anyone wanna entertain? I make a motion to adjourn at eight forty. Commissioner Fatizzi says he would like to adjourn. Anyone second?
I will second.
Commissioner Sexton, second sat, all in favor of adjournment? Say hi. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, eight forty-four, the meeting's closed. I don't have my gavel.
Wow, thanks for sticking around for so long, everybody.